...with the exception of Councilmember Nichols, who is delayed and may be joining us before the meeting ends. Depends on how long the meeting goes. Even though it's not on our agenda, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And it's going to be led by Councilmember Clive Kilpak, who volunteered.
I have noted you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have, we also don't have on our agenda any opportunity for citizen comments, but because there may be items of interest to the audience, if the council is okay with that, I would ask that we open citizen comments at this time to allow anyone from the audience to address the council, either on a business item or something that is not on the agenda. So at this time, is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the council? Could you please state your name and contact information for the minutes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Nathan Gedge, 2794 West, 7550 South. Something that's not on the agenda this evening is, of course, regarding our rodeo. We received a request from a possible concessionaire who would like to bring a monster truck to the rodeo and do rides like we've done in the past. However, during the fourth, fifth, and sixth, he would also like to sell rides in the park during the day. However, with there not being a carnival, the council has to approve any potential vendors or events in the park. And I just wanted to bring that up so it could possibly be agendized at a future meeting, also so we could give this vendor direction as to whether to prepare to bring his monster truck for that event. So I just wanted to bring that up with you for your direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Just by raise of hands, is there anyone on the council who would like that placed on the agenda for council consideration at our next meeting?
A question of-
Councilmember Southworth.
Clarification, thank you, Mayor. Would this fall under a separate event in the park? Could this just be turned as part of the stampede? What the stampede does, because I, if, help me out here, Nathan or Nate, what's, where, where would you want to do this? Because it would be over in the dirt area, it wouldn't be in the park itself, would it?
During the actual rodeo events, it would be in the rodeo arena. However, during the day, he would like to sell during the park to people who are visiting the park to, you know, just relax in the park or visit the, you know, like the Chamber booth on the Fourth of July. So it wouldn't be during the day run out of the rodeo arena.
Okay, Councilmember Kilpak, did you have a question?
Yes. As I recall reading the things on it, Nate, this guy, or this, this individual vendor also wanted to have concessions for food and other things at the same time, did he not? Even along the parade route, is that something that, okay, that's, that-
Okay, because we cannot hear Nate nodding, that would be a yes. Just so the minutes, so the minutes are clear, that the reply was affirmative. So just by raise of hands, if there are sufficient councilmembers who would like to consider this, will have it placed on the agenda. If not, then we won't.
Okay, okay, question.
Councilmember Southworth.
What's the scale of the operation? Is he just, is it just like a small churro cart? I mean, was it like some major, like restaurant type outfit? I mean, if it's just a churro cart, that's not, it's kind of different.
What we've been told is the size of a taco cart is 20 feet long, so between 10 to 20 feet long. So like a portable concession cart.
And is it just one, or is it multiple?
Just one. And then if he does, he would like to sell concessions during the day and then can vend at the rodeo at the night, at night. But then, because he's coming from out of state, just so he could maximize vending experience.
Right, I will weigh in with my opinion. We've told other people no. We made a special exception for the Chamber of Commerce because of their relationship with the city. I think that if we start accepting other types of commercial enterprises in the park, we really have to open it back up. I don't think we get to pick and choose, yeah, we like this one, no, we don't like that one. It's either or. We chose that it was going to be the city. And the only reason the Chamber's in is because of their close ties with the city. They're sponsored by the city. I would say we don't open it up for others. We see how it works this year and next year. If we want to change it, change it next year. But then open it, open the possibility to everybody equally. That would be my opinion. So I'm not in favor of allowing it. If the council, if there are four votes to allow, I really think then we need to bring back the entire policy of not allowing others. Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree to most of that. What I would, what I would suggest is, is that if it's part of the stampede, just include it with that. And that means it wouldn't be in the park properly. But over there by the rodeo grounds, keep it as part of yours, that celebration that you're already authorized to do, as part of that, and just maybe just keep it there. And that probably would be fit within what you're saying here, that we're not adding to anything in the park, just keep that over the stampede.
So does anyone disagree with Councilmember Southworth's opinion on that? Councilmember Kilpak?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that was said is that he also wanted this monster truck to use to do rides and things as part of the carnival. Well, there is no carnival. And he was, and he was notified of that. So there's no reason to even consider the monster truck, because there's not going to be a carnival area for him to be able to charge for rides. As far as being a vendor at the rodeo, I don't have a problem. I don't have a big problem with it being as part of the rodeo itself because of the inside of the rodeo grounds.
Okay, that's pretty much the same opinion. Does anybody have a different? Does anybody want to allow it and want to talk about it more next week? Or in two weeks? I meant in two weeks. Okay, it looks like there's not enough support on the council to have that discussion opened up again. So if you could just relay that information, or I will relay the information if you'd rather. All right? Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, I will close citizen comments. And we will move now to our consent item. Does anyone want to pull the consent? One consent item before further discussion? Councilmember Southworth.
I will move to approve.
Second.
With a motion made by Councilmember Southworth, seconded by Councilmember Kilpak, is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote, we will call vote. Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Kilpak?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Passes six in favor. Okay, thank you. We'll move down to our business items. Business item 3A, discussion of possible action regarding Resolution 13-67, authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement for Maple Hills subdivision Phases 1 and 2. Tom Reddick.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thanks, thank you all for scheduling this special meeting and including these items on your agenda. Maple Hills is located at northwest at 6400 West and 7800 South. And as you recall from the items that were on your agenda last week, development plan was approved and also was a modification of design standards to allow for a half road, a little more than a half road to be constructed for 6400 West. On that same agenda, the council terminated a former development agreement that was from 19, I'm sorry, was from 2009, which was connected to a former development plan and subdivision plat on this property that never was executed or constructed. The new development agreement and reimbursement agreement, items 3A and 3B, that are on for tonight have, have been negotiated. And there have been a couple of minor changes made since then. Should the council wish to ask any questions regarding those minor changes, Robert Thorpe with our City Attorney's Office is here tonight to address those, those changes. Otherwise, our recommendation is to move forward and approve both the development agreement and the reimbursement agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Kilpak?
Mayor, I'd like to know what those minor changes are. Just because I'd like to know what we're going into.
Please, yes.
The changes from what you've seen are really very minor. One change that caused a lot of individual changes, but were really the same thing, was the correction of the name of one of the entities from Maple Hills East LLC to East Maples Investment LLC. The large number, larger number of changes, which are still very few, have to do with a new way we decided to deal with the various transfers of property. As you know, the city is going to swap some property sitting on top of the fire station for some property up on top for a park. And in connection with that, there was a piece of property that had remediation of some contaminated soils that were underneath an existing road. What we finally decided was the best way to do that was to carve out a very small 50-foot piece of land that would be that road and about a few feet on either side. And that's going to be conveyed to Urban Chase, which is the entity that is actually pushing this application forward, although it will ultimately, the agreement will be with Richmond American Homes. Urban Chase will then undertake to remediate that sediment as what's called a bona fide prospective purchaser. That allows that sediment to be removed and remediated within a six-week period rather than a six-month period if, for example, the city wanted to try and do that on its own. Once that piece of property is remediated, Urban Chase will dedicate it to the city and it will become part of 6400 West. But by taking out only that very small piece and otherwise having the entire roadway available, this will then enable Richmond American to start constructing 6400 West immediately, including connecting with the utilities coming up into the project. And by the time they finish those connections and start building the road, we'll have that remediated and it'll be a straight shot up the road. Now, that change necessitated an amendment to the actual land swap agreement, because the land swap agreement was going to deal with that remediated soil in a slightly different way. So Maple Hills is signing this agreement now in order to agree to amend that land swap agreement to comply with this idea of the small piece being retained. Urban Chase is signing this agreement to agree that they're going to take that small piece, remediate the environmental problem, and then dedicate it back to the city. And that was the agreement that was reached Friday after you were given that earlier draft. So those are the changes that are, have been made in the agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember Southworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, so if I'm clear, that the city, this is, the land that needs to be, the ground that needs to be remediated, the city owes currently.
That's right.
But we're going to deed that over to them so that we could use this tool to get the job done sooner and then they'll get it back. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you. Very good.
Any further questions? Okay, I think those are all the questions. Thank you very much. Councilmember Kilpak, did you want to make a motion?
I do. I move to approve Resolution 13-67.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Kilpak, seconded by Councilmember Stoker. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kilpak?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Passes six in favor. All right, thank you. We'll now move to business item 3B. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Resolution 13-71, authorizing the mayor to execute a reimbursement agreement for Maple Hills subdivision Phases 1 and 2. Tom Reddick.
The same, the same development and obviously the same reimbursement type applies here that's based on our code. And I, I don't have anything more to add unless you have questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, I believe Councilmember Stoker is ready to make a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution 13-71.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Stoker, seconded by Councilmember Kilpak. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. Councilmember Kilpak?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Southworth?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Passes six in favor. Thank you very much. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, business item 3C. I will read and then turn it to you, Councilmember Southworth. 3C, discussion of possible action setting the salary and responsibilities for the position of mayor. Councilmember Southworth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As I expressed in the last meeting, I wholeheartedly support this, this change. I think this is a very good, positive move for the city. And it will be in the long term, absolutely the best thing. However, understanding my participation in this next part of the conversation is clearly a conflict of interest. And knowing that I cannot recuse myself from this, I will remove myself from the dais at this point and listen down here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Southworth. If you'll let the minutes reflect that Councilmember Southworth has left meeting. Basically, where we left it last week, when we talked about this before, the council agreed that the position of mayor would be something that would be regarded as full-time. And we lacked agreement on what exactly that meant or what salary should be set for compensation. So thanks to Bryce Hutterly, who assembled a draft for us to look at, outlining the mayor's responsibilities and putting together some comparable positions in the city and, well, not comparable to the mayor, but comparable salary-wise, and gave us a point of reference. So at this point, I'd just like to open it to the council. Is there some action that you would like to take? First of all, based on the draft of the mayor's responsibilities? Does it look pretty much what we were talking about? I thought it was vague enough that, that we got the idea without giving any specific hours or locations that the mayor would have to be, I believe, at the beginning of every year, whatever the city council is, should set priorities and the mayor should work toward those priorities. I also very strongly believe that there should be a list of meetings that the mayor should be in attendance at. And those can be established by the council at the beginning of, either the beginning of the budget year or the beginning of the calendar year during the strategic retreat. So I, I think this allows for both of those things to happen quite nicely. Comments?
I agree.
Okay, well, at this point, I would then entertain a motion to approve the draft as it is written and then make the changes that are necessary to the code. It will have to come back, how we're going to incorporate it, I believe, it'll have to come back as a change with official language. But I think that can, that can wait. I would like to send a message to anyone who's considering running for office that this is what we're looking at and what we will be passing in the future. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the draft?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Stoker, seconded by Councilmember Hanson. All in, are there any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, did you say, did you raise your hand with discussion to the motion?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see it until I had already turned my head.
No worries. I was just going to say, thank you, Bryce, for putting that together for taking care to incorporate all of the comments that everybody had made and some of the concerns that were brought up. I, I, I didn't need to sound flippant when I, when the mayor asked if there was any conversation, I said, I agree. I, I really do appreciate the work that went into trying to get the level of detail that appears in there and thank you for that effort. That's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five in favor. Rick Davis, Bryce Hutterly.
Mayor, I just would like the council to acknowledge and recognize that this was not just solely my efforts, that the staff, Eric, Anna, John, many staff members contributed to compiling this information. So I just want to thank them publicly for helping to pull all that work together.
Thank you. Okay, now the more sensitive issue would be that of compensation. I don't think I need to remind anyone where we left off last week. It should still be fresh in your mind. We left off without any sort of agreement, with a lot of ideas. And the challenge to go home, kind of allow the ideas to, to take hold and come back today with a suggestion or two. Councilmember Stoker?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, a thank you to our city staff for preparing all this information. We were given a lot of numbers that compared several other cities in the state of Utah. Some thoughts that I had in looking over the numbers that were prepared for us. It looked like for several of the strong mayor cities, much of that compensation included a salary over $100,000 with full benefits. I don't think we need to go there, even though, you know, some of my comments from the last meeting reflected that I think our mayor would be going to the same meetings as a strong mayor, who have many of the same responsibilities. I don't think we need to aim at a salary above $100,000. That being said, if we look at some of the other full-time salaries that were presented, most of them are between $70,000 and $100,000. Really, the only two that are below $80,000 are Eagle Mountain at $70,000 and Tooele at $77,750. And so, and then in addition to those, the, the city staff prepared a comparison of other city salaries in the report, including the city planners, city recorder, engineers, attorneys, city attorneys, deputy city attorneys and such. Looking at the midpoint, most of those salaries lie above $80,000 again. And so with sensitivity to the, to the money that the taxpayers were providing to the city, I would support an annual salary of $78,000, which puts us below the midpoint of all of the other city salaries that are in the report and puts us near the bottom of all of the other full-time mayors, with the exception of Tooele, I'm sorry, yes, the exception of Tooele at $77,250 and Eagle Mountain at $70,000. So those would be my opinions. It's, I think it addresses some of the concerns that were expressed that, some by the residents and some by the other council members, that we need to be careful with the compensation and with the, the tax revenue that the residents have entrusted us with. And it would be interesting to hear some of the thoughts of the other council members.
Hey, Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that I've been struggling quite a bit with. Having never been in that seat, I, I can't fully understand everything that happens there. I've talked, I've spoken with a few prior mayors and a few other, a few other folks who have some very, very good insight and people who I trust very much. And I believe that we're, we're starting to go the right direction, even though I'm somewhat uneasy about the magnitude of some of the changes. That said, if I take personal feelings and emotion out of it and look at it from a more analytical perspective, based on what we've seen during your term and prior mayors, this proves to be something that can and should more than pay for itself. With the placement of salary, or with the decision as to where to put the salary, we're, we really are competing with the private market as well for an individual who can dedicate their full-time. I appreciate the sensitivity to the numbers, the choice of numbers that were pulled out last time for initial contemplation. I appreciate your thoughts personally. As I looked at this, I looked at the data that was provided and just cities that had a full-time mayor. I didn't consider form of government, just is there mayor actants full-time? The median salary, the average salary came out to be $90,122.97. The midpoint was $89,462. So average of the two of those is 200 bucks shy of $90,000. And that sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money. However, given the responsibility and the gravity of the position, I think that sends the proper message of what is being expected of this person who, who accepts the role. It's an executive-level position with pay that, although it's not completely competitive with corresponding levels or with corresponding positions in private industry, I, I think that that would be my best guess. If we're going to change the requirements, I would like us to put the salary at something competitive to make sure that we're enticing the best potential candidates to run for the position. So I would counter to every motion in my, running, running through my body. The analytical side of me says we should go with a salary closer to $90,000.
Okay, Councilmember Hanson?
And listening to Councilman Stoker coming at this figure, and Eagle Mountain shows merely a full-time mayor at $70,000. Doesn't indicate whether business benefits included or not. They are not listed. Logan has a full-time mayor at $86,278. And that's with all benefits included. So the figures that we were given, total compensation package, at $80,000, with your benefits, we would be at $120,212. At 68 with benefits, we'd be at 37, or benefits of 37,580, we'd be at $105,580. I don't believe we can offer this position to somebody and not offer them benefits. They've got to have full benefits, because it's going to be a full-time job. You're going to leave the job they have or be retired from the job or that type of thing. So I wonder if, and looking like at Eagle Mountain at $70,000, is that including retirement and, and different benefits? Because it doesn't show it as, as including that. So where if we went with the, the other, you know, with the $68,000 and with benefits, we're at $105, at 80.
Councilmember Kilpak? Oh, Councilmember Hanson, please.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Kilpak?
Mayor, I, I'm looking through this and I, I think that one thing that we have to look at from, from the standpoint is whatever the, whatever the salary that we're naming to date is the take-home salary is, is what's going to be the compensation that they can spend. With the, with the exemption, without the exception of the taxes and, and possibly the Obamacare and everything else is going to be tacked onto it. And so I, boy, I almost want to recuse myself from the dais just in case I change my mind as to what office I'm going to run for. But I, I kind of go along with Councilmember Stoker on this, that $78,000 is not a bad number when you figure in the, the benefits that includes the, the $5,000. the benefits that includes the, the, uh, five thousand, five hundred and ninety a year for a vehicle allowance and the telecommunications allowance, et cetera. That's going to be putting it right around a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars total compensation, so. I, I would go with, I would agree with Councilmember Stoker on this one. It's lower than what is shown as the eighty, but it's higher than the sixty-eight. And, again, because of what we're talking about, let's remember that we want to get qualified candidates that are willing to do this full-time, but we have to remember, what is qualification to be a non-administrative mayor but one who can be effective in bringing about changes into our city?
The only qualification is that they have to be elected. They have to get fifty percent plus one vote, and that qualifies them. Uh, the council doesn't get to have any say in who is and who isn't qualified.
Exactly.
And we don't want to be bickering among ourselves about whether we think the other person sitting next to us is qualified for the job, the, the, our constituency determines that. So, as far as qualifications, we, we don't even get to address
Right.
the qualification issue, but what we can do and what we should do is address the issue of required activities. It, it's required that the mayor attend those meetings and anyone just by nature of the fact that they are the mayor of the city
Should yes.
is required to be in certain places, certain times. Whether they do a good job or a bad job, i- it's not up to us to determine that. But I think, I think the salary that we set, if it is like Councilmember McConaughey was saying, uh, an executive salary, we will get people who have experience, that they will then display during their campaign to the public and the public will be able to choose among several qualified candidates instead of saying, uh, well, who's willing to be the, the volunteer for the next four years and how much time could they really spend doing the job? So, I, I think either the ninety thousand, this is interesting because Councilmember Stoker and Councilmember McConaughey have sort of searched places uh, from last week's discussion, but I think, I think we are going in the right direction and I would agree that that we are setting it in, in the right neighborhood if we can come to four votes for one member. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor, um, one of the thoughts that crossed my mind as I was contemplating this is that, um, we'll probably need to reevaluate some of the different decisions that we've made. Uh, one of those being the, uh, the idea of, uh, using a lobbyist. We might want to reevaluate that if we're going to be changing, uh, the expectation for the amount of time we expect the mayor to be spending out there, so we could conceivably use some of the funds that we had set aside for lobbying to help um, reallocate that for the budget to this position to help take some of that financial burden uh, from the state, which is also one of those supporting ideas for why I posed a ninety thousand dollar number. It's something that's, uh, about a third or less, I believe, than what we had budgeted for the lobbyists. And it's something that's right up, right up the average with the other full-time mayors. And our city, um, is not well, um, there, there's a whole train of thoughts running through my mind, none of them are going to come out clearly. But, uh, there's no other comments, I think I'm ready to make the motion.
Councilmember Stoker had a comment before you said that, are you okay letting him comment first? Alright, Councilmember Stoker.
Uh, I just wanted to say that I agree with what Councilmember McConaughey has been saying here. We do need to compete with the private sector to make sure that we're getting, um, people running for the position that are qualified or willing to give up their, a professional day job so that we have a co- a competent, qualified professional leading the city that can interact with state legislators, um, other mayors, and we're not just getting people that don't have a job for a reason, type of thing, and so, I agree with, with what Councilmember McConaughey has said, it goes along with the com- the comments I made last week. And I think that we need to, you know, take this, take this discussion seriously, make sure that we, we are reflecting um, how important we want our mayor to be treated in these circles. Um, to make sure that, that our, you know, our mayor coming in the, in future years and in future, uh, terms isn't going to be seen as, as the budget or the chief for the inexpensive mayor, but is going to be seen as a serious person, is going to be seen as a person that leads the fourth largest city in the state of Utah. And so, I just wanted to, to say I, I support Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember McConaughey is waiting for me to make the motion here. So, I, I would move that we set the, the mayor's compensation at eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars with standard employee benefits, uh, start, starting at the next election term for the mayor.
Can you clarify January two thousand fourteen?
January twenty-fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, is there any discuss- seconded by Councilmember McConaughey, is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none? Let's do a roll call vote. Let's see, which one do I want to start with? Let's do, Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kilpat?
No.
Councilmember Stoker?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Go pass this board on paper. Okay, thank you, could that, uh, do we need that to come back? Because it changes our, um, code. The mayor's salary is written in our code. So, can that come back as well? Alright. Bryce Hattie?
As I understand, uh, we will bring a resolution before the council that sets the wages um, for the next budget year, and I believe it shows the compensation of all the council members, so we will reflect that uh, in that resolution, and also, we will, uh, have, uh, the legal staff review the description and get that prepared so that it can come back and, and be, uh, prepared correctly for the code.
Okay. Thank you very much, uh, we will now move to the last item on our agenda and invite Councilmember Southworth if you'd like to join us for this. We have business item three D, discussion possible action regarding fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, ten to its budget. Rick Davis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, this is, uh, just another opportunity to field questions, provide information, updates, um, to you relative to the fiscal year twenty fourteen budget. There's also a secondary issue that I surfaced today in an email to you and promised that I would, uh, surface this at this meeting today. And, uh, to recap, I'm very appreciative of the time that, uh, individuals, uh, both, uh, on our staff and elected officials spent on the compensation committee. I think, uh, we made a great, um, amount of progress, uh, in establishing the strategic direction for compensation, establishing a philosophy, uh, for compensation. Uh, I think that we can, however, expand on our treatment of the compression issue. That's probably something that we need to, uh, address a little bit more. As you know, there are various ways to define compression. In the way that we presented it consistently to you, there are nineteen individuals that have been identified in the city. And, uh, in speaking with our department heads, uh, the thing that, uh, we believe would be the easiest, most beneficial thing to do is to provide them with a little bit of latitude of how to address these individuals inasmuch as these individuals also align themselves with certain performance, uh, requirements. So in other words, uh, simply because somebody's suffering from, uh, compression or is, uh, experiencing that, that factor that doesn't necessarily qualify them for additional consideration, there would be a performance factor involved in that, uh, as well. What I'm suggesting is an additional incremental one percent, not citywide, but one that can be used at the discretion of the department heads to address specifically these individuals who are high performers, but at the same time, due to the circumstances that you, you're very familiar with, uh, find themselves in a compression issue. So, that's what I would propose to you tonight. The total cost of this appears to be only in the neighborhood of about ten thousand ongoing uh, to do this. We'd want to continue to monitor this compression issue, uh, look at it to get next year, see if it had the desired effect uh, that we wanted, we may come back and say, well, looks like we need to do a little something more for these folks, or other issues may crop up. But, uh, for this year, I would recommend that, uh, in, uh, approving our compensation strategy, you would consider the addition of, uh, that incremental one percent uh, for compression for those nineteen individuals that have been identified.
Okay. Questions, comments from the council? Does anyone disagree? It looks like there's something from the council that
Thank you very much.
appropriate way to, to proceed. Are there councilmembers who have questions or comments relating to the budget they would like to bring up at this point? Councilmember McConaughey?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. There's a number, number of things I want to briefly bring up, one of them was the, the amount that we had budgeted, looking at the proposed budget compared to what we had budgeted last year for wage compression, we had set aside four hundred thousand dollars, and it looks like next year that's being reduced to two hundred and four thousand. And if, if I under- if I understand right, when we set that aside, although we said it was for addressing the issue of compression, it was really to address issues that we knew we had regarding compensation, whether it was compression or something else. With this addressing, uh, with, with this action to address the compression, do you anticipate we'll still keep those funds set aside for other salary issues, uh, that the compensation committee noted such as the, uh, career path? Desire for a career path or career ladder?
Yes, thank you for that question, um. The four hundred thousand, remember, represented, uh, Janice and myself pulling out all the stops and trying to figure out how we can continue to put, move forward uh, with the programs and goals that you wanted last year. And, uh, balancing that with what we thought were reasonable reductions in the proposed budget. It's not real money, it was just, we're going to say we're going to spend less than this, and, and we came up with, uh, items that equaled and anticipated four hundred thousand dollars. That four, the realization of that four hundred thousand dollars depended on our realization of revenue that came in during that year. With that said, we, uh, reduced, when we, uh, started to get some of the results back from the compensation study, we reduced the amount that we thought we would need to carry forward to address compression, uh, to the amount that you just noted. And at this point, uh, probably there isn't additional need to address compression with that funding. So, in one sense, yes, we could utilize that funding to address other salary issues. But keep it in mind, and please take note that one of the salary issues that you'll be confronting is probably a more than double-digit or way into the double-digit increase in health expenses, healthcare, uh, next year. That is also a salary issue or a compensation issue that we really haven't fully, uh, built into the budget. So, keep an eye on that issue. I mentioned also in my communications to you that URS has promised another six-figure request or demand, whatever you want to call it, for next year. There are other expenses, we also have to see how the economy works its way through the calendar year and the fiscal year. So, I'm enthusiastic about what you want to do with it, we'll need that direction, but a good point is we won't need it for compression.
So, I guess my question then would be to the rest of the council, uh, we had four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for wage compression last year. This year, the proposed amount is two hundred and four thousand. Would we want to direct staff to change that description for sort of wage compression to, um, I'm not sure how to title that better, but, uh, fund to address compensation concerns? Um, and in addition to that, would we want to reduce it to two hundred thousand knowing that some of these other impending items, or should we leave it at four hundred thousand where it is, knowing that we have health insurance, URS likely, career ladder or career path?
And to be clear, there's four hundred thousand in, sorry, in this year that we're living in right now, this fiscal year, for at least another month. Uh, and the proposed to you is to reduce that amount to two hundred, so you, you have four hundred authorized to address compression in this year. If you want to change, say you want to utilize that, uh, that's what we need to know, in the next year I've only proposed two hundred going forth. But, uh, like I said, uh, if, if you balance that with other considerations, uh, you, you may not want to utilize that money right now until we find out what Obamacare is going to do and what URS is going to do. That's my only advice to you, but I'll, I'll do whatever you want.
I, I'm suggesting we leave it at four hundred thousand because we don't know some of these changes that are going to be coming up. And like you mentioned, we can always ratchet it back down to something lower. And this year when we had four hundred thousand set aside, we didn't necessarily use it, so if we have four hundred thousand for next year, we have room to address some of these other issues. My, my concern is, is we sat through the compensation committee, um, the loudest concern from employees was lack of a career path or a career ladder. And if we do get hit with some of these higher increases for some of these other portions and we don't already have money set aside, then we might be in a position where we have to make a decision, do we pay for employee benefits or do we try and give them some sort of career path? So I'm thinking by leaving the four hundred thousand, we might be able to be better positioned to address those total compensation issues as they sort of come up, so. That's why I would say would council be in favor of leaving four hundred thousand or going to the proposed two hundred and four thousand?
Councilmember Stoker? You don't have, are you addressing that question or did you have other?
No, I wanted to kind of provide some insight into that question. I've been involved a little bit with the way that Salt Lake City's handled this, and Salt Lake City is actually getting impacted with the cost of Obamacare this year, um, rather than next year. Uh, Salt Lake City is part of a healthcare co-op, uh, rather than an, uh, an insurance company, and so, they're, for the most part, self-funded. Um, the health insurance costs for Salt Lake City this past year, the utilization actually went down. Uh, we saw, and, and Salt Lake City's in much the same position that West Jordan is where most of the employees are on a high deductible health plan. Actually saw the utilization go down, which should have lowered their costs. But because of the Affordable Care Act, the costs actually increased ten percent over what we were paying. And so, I, I think it's reasonable to think that it would be about the same. Uh, with the changes from the Affordable Care Act, with, uh, how our coverage is, the lifetime maximums and stuff that have changed with the Affordable Care Act, I think we could expect to see a ten percent increase, even if utilization stays the same or goes down, um, just to cover those provisions. Um, with regards to the, uh, retirement system, uh, I think that's a shot in the dark, uh, I don't know what we're going to expect from there. And so, with those two things moving forward, I think we should set aside money to take care of compensation issues to, to be able to, as we move forward, some of the discussions we had in our compensation committee, again, we set the framework, but we didn't, we didn't have the time or the energy or the effort to be able to go through the, the details, the action items, to be able to move forward on some of these things like a career path, um, and making adjustments to some of these schedules. I think we need to set aside money to, to begin addressing those issues, but I want to be cautious that we don't work ourselves into a hole with some of these upcoming expenses that are going to hit us. The last thing I want to do is to set uh, an expectation that we're going to increase benefits or increase salary only to be hit next year with a massive amounts of costs with regards to the retirement system and to health insurance and have to back off of that. Nobody wants to see their benefits decreased. So, I think we want to make, to make, to take baby steps forward, I guess you want to say, to be cautiously optimistic that things will continue to improve.
Okay. Further questions, comments? Councilmember McConaughey?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. So would you be in favor of the 400 or the 204?
You noticed I didn't answer that question, huh?
No, no.
I, I think I'd be in favor more of the 200, just because of the, the upcoming costs that we're seeing.
And let me clarify, well, and, well, what, what I was saying, well, never, never mind, I'll skip that.
I, I'd rather, I'd rather stick with the $200,000 number.
Is there anybody else that would prefer the 400 that we had last year? Okay, I guess that's just me.
So Mayor and Council, to be clear, you'd be in favor of reserving the 200,000 to address additional compensation issues as, as we move forward, including the execution of the study, I believe you, you've also authorized to look at the career ladder issue. I may say that, that I don't know for sure, but an educated guess is that a career ladder program, the likes of which we've been discussing, would eclipse very quickly 400,000. It's, it's going to be way north of there, is what I suspect right now. I could be wrong, but it's, it's going to be fairly expensive. We need a plan for that. It's obviously part of our strategic initiative that you, you passed, but that's going to require some planning. And I think you authorized the study to, to, to design that before we went forward, so we'll know for sure after that.
Okay, my preference is just to wait and see what it costs, and then determine how much of it we can afford. I, I know that, Rick, you've spoken on many occasions that we cannot afford to pay the employees what they're really worth. We try, we know that compensation is important, other things are important as well. I, I know we've heard from several different groups saying what they really care about is more help, they wanted more officers on the, on the street, and we tried to address that. When we see that there is a problem, I think the council's been very responsive in addressing it to the extent that we are able to within the, the reality of the budget. I don't know that putting aside 400,000 versus 200,000, I, at this point, I don't have enough information about what you're proposing to be able to say how much would it cost to fund it. I think it's going to take more than the 400,000. I'm concerned about some of the compression issues, not just what we've identified as compression, but what some of the employees identify as their, their concerns with what they feel is compression. I think we need to take a look at that and be open-minded to making adjustments as they are needed. I would not be opposed to the $400,000 set aside. I wouldn't be opposed to doubling that, but where are we going to get the money? So we need to look at the reality of the budget and say, what are we going to cut back on, so that we can address compensation in the way reinstating career paths or, or whatever that's going to be. It's not just we're taking this out of reserves and it's one-time money and we're putting it in. It would be ongoing. That's what concerns me about the 400,000 versus the 200,000. What are we going to cut back on? What are we going to take out of the budget in order to fund it?
And that's where I wanted to, my, my thought was continue with what we had budgeted last year, because I think it'll be easier to try and maintain that, rather than get down the path and find out it's going to cost more than we thought, and we've waited away the budget that we had for that, and now we can't afford it because we've reallocated those funds elsewhere. So that, that's where I was coming from, but I've got a couple other different topics to, to discuss.
Okay. Um, I, I'm not sure that, that we make a decision tonight. I think that we make a decision when we have the entire budget before us, and if we're going to move priorities around, shift money from one program to another program, or whatever we're going to do, we should do it in the context of the whole budget. But go ahead, especially if anybody has questions that they want answers to when we have to make a decision next two weeks. I'm going to, I'm going to keep calling it next week, in two weeks. So please continue, Councilmember McConaughey.
Okay. Next issue, most of these should go quicker, they're not, I don't feel as passionate about some of these. When we look at the different line item subtotals that we have on the budget, our training budget also includes travel. In the private sector, it's customary to have travel separated from training, and I would just ask the therapy support to direct staff that, obviously it's probably not going to be something we can do in time for this budget, but starting July 1st going forward, actually start tracking in a separate line, travel expenses, separate from training, so that we can see what, what the difference is there. Are we doing more train local versus outside? Would there be any objection?
Clarification?
Councilmember Southwood?
Clarification, Councilman, are you, are you saying not, that you would not fund it? You're just saying separate it so you can track it?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Right now, we don't have a mechanism or an ability to find out how much we've spent on travel, hotel, meals while people are out of town, other than going line by line through reimbursements, which isn't reasonable.
Is it a per diem situation that we're working off of?
So, yeah, would there be any objection if we give staff that direction to add that as a line going forward?
I don't even care.
I'm okay with it.
I, I have, I have zero opinion on that. I, I don't think it matters. I would assume it's something easy for the staff to track with a different line item, hotels and, and mileage reimbursement and meal reimbursement versus what did it cost to actually pay for the, the training seminar? I can't imagine that that would be difficult to track.
And, and talking to Ryan and Eric earlier today, they said it would be doable, but they prefer that we enact it at the start of the new year, rather than try and budget this year. I wouldn't advocate trying to budget and break it out this year, rather just we start tracking those expenses next year going forward, and then in the 2014, 2015 budget. So there's consensus to include that, then?
I agree. Well, you can make a motion, just make a motion.
I move that we direct staff to include a separate line item for travel, starting July 1st going forward, for training.
We have a motion made by Councilmember McConaughey, second is by Councilmember Hanson.
Comment.
And welcome to Councilmember Nichols.
I was going to say, who's not?
Sorry.
Where's the camera? I wish we were videotaping this meeting right now.
You look like you just got off an airplane, is that true?
Yes.
Yes. That's dedication.
Okay, welcome to Councilmember Nichols. The, the motion on the table is to, in the, the year going forward, starting with the fiscal year 2013, 2014, to have a separate line item on the budget that tracks the travel expense, separate from the, the training expense, so we know what those numbers are going to be.
Okay.
Is there discussion of motion? Councilmember Southwood?
I believe we have a comment that some manager would like to make, I'd like to share that before.
I was going to call on him when you were done.
Okay, thank you.
I try to, I try to take things in, in the proper order. Rick, did you have a comment you'd like to make on that?
Talking to Eric, that we, we can do that. Keep in mind that the only difference between travel and training is the cost of the registration of the conference. So what our intention would be is just to break out, there would be tr- uh, travel, which would also include the accommodations for the individual at the conference, and then there would, and the per diem, and then there would be registration for the conference itself. So you'd be able to see registration. There wouldn't be a line item that said training so much, just travel and registration. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think one of the, like, when the government finance office, we registered it, it was a video conference, so there was no travel involved with that. When we pay the registration for something in Salt Lake City, I don't know that anybody turns in reimbursement for the 19 miles or however far it is to get there. So I think that Councilmember McConaughey's intent is to, to ascertain how much of it is done locally versus how much is done off-site, requiring additional expense to receive the same training.
Exactly.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Yeah.
Councilmember McConaughey?
And looking at some of these others, I, I need a little bit additional background before I can make an intelligent comment or motion, so I'm going to hold on to some of these others till...
We will be talking about this.
Are we going to have this as an agenda item at our meeting next Tuesday, or not until two weeks?
No, 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 no. Next Tuesday is a workshop with the Planning Commission, has nothing to do with the budget.
Okay. Okay, I'll bring up, I'll bring up these others now on the 12 then.
Okay. Councilmember Southwood?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify in a, in a previous discussion on the, on the compression, there was a question asked about, does anybody support the 400? There was silence there, I just wanted to clarify. I think I might fall in line with what you're saying here. I don't know if it's 200 or 2 million, I, I just don't know what it would be, and so it's hard to say what it is at this point. What it is, is, is the right number to make sure we're keeping good employees engaged and on board and not losing them. So, but, but that's why the silence there, I guess, Councilman, that, so just so you understand, as you work forward towards this, then also as part of lack of understanding, having been in previous discussions that yourself and, and Councilmember Stoker have been involved with, and so as we get more of those details, and that, that'll help as well. Just kind of clarify that, thank you.
No, no, I appreciate that. That's the same place where we were last year. We weren't sure the size of compression or the real issues, well, how, how to even define compression, so we took a shot in the dark, and as Rick mentioned, it was a number that he and Janice came up with, saying 400,000, that would be a placeholder, we'll budget for that, knowing that we're not going to go above that amount. So that's where that came from. So last year, we were in the same position, we, we really didn't know. We still really don't know what the, what the real issues, I mean, as we talked about compression, it's a much, much smaller number for compression, in air quotes, sorry about that, but...
Air quotes do not, do not travel to the recording very much.
And that's why I felt the need to vocalize that. But, no, that, and that's why I brought, I, I, I saw staff's recommendation that we lower the amount that we had budgeted there, but if there's support of keeping that at a lower number, rather than the 400 that we had before, if I'm the only one that's hoping for the 400, then obviously we just move on with what, what's been proposed by staff.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, just, I would like to request from the council, if there are changes that you want to see in the budget, instead of, because we have to pass it on the 12, we, we don't have the option of, of postponing unless we are going to have a truth and taxation process, which we are not, we're going to make a decision on the 12. So my request, any council member who would like to make changes other than something that has already been proposed by staff, could you please send that information out to, to the other council members? Not for comment, we're not going to have an illegal meeting by commenting on anything, but just to give the council kind of a heads up to the direction that you're planning, because I know some of you have expressed a hesitancy to vote on an issue that you're just now hearing about, the, the day you're hearing it. I know there, there could be an instance where one council member wants something changed, another council member might be in agreeance with that, but because of the lateness of the, the information, and it is not passing. So if there are changes that you would like in the budget, shoot it out to all the council, copy Rick on it, so he understands what we're going to be looking at, and then the meeting, I'm hoping, can go a little more smoothly, so that everybody knows in advance what the problem areas are, what the areas for discussion are. Is this unfair? Okay. It appears that the council is okay with that suggestion. Now we are at the end of our agenda, unless somebody else had comments to make on the budget. Okay, because we didn't have an official time at the beginning of the meeting for staff or council comments, now is the remarks, and if you would like to comment now before we adjourn, I think Chief had something that he would like to say.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. I just filled a report last week, we, two Saturdays ago, we had our graduation for our CERT program. We had 16 participants, and they, the federal government has revamped the CERT program, so now the, the participants only need to come for one weekend where they do their exercise, the drill, and they do the rest of it online, their tests and all of that, so it shortens it up, but we had good success with the first one, so we'll look at trying to do another one. That's it.
Okay. Thanks. Chief?
This is not me as the chief, so much as it's me as the, what am I, elect, president-elect of the exchange club, but it, this Saturday at 10:30 in the morning, we're doing our child abuse awareness field, which is the field of flags that will be out here by Memorial Park, and we'll be honoring those children that were killed due to child abuse in 2010, 11, and 12, and so far in 13. And so you're welcome to attend, again, that starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, or 10:30 in the morning on Saturday.
Okay. Any other remarks? I, I have one comment. This Saturday is the library, summer reading kickoff, and I believe parts of the city are involved. We have several events going on at Veterans Memorial Park, similar to what it was last year. Councilmembers are invited to attend, that starts at 11 and goes until 3. It's 11 to 3. Did you have a comment, Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I took up, took up Public Works on their offer for a ride along and spent some time today with, I, I don't know their last names, Jared and Justin, and they were phenomenal. I saw a lot of stuff I never, I, I never really thought about, and it raised a number of, number of concerns for me, and not anything that they're doing, but rather what's being asked of them and how much they're doing and the staffing that we have, and I've seen some of the infrastructure. I had no idea that the fumes from the, from the wastewater could erode away the concrete in the manholes, and seeing how some of those were starting to decay and fall apart, that was incredibly eye-opening. I had no idea we had a subterranean water system at all. So I didn't know we had that to capture groundwater, and that was another new revelation to me, but I learned quite a bit spending just a few hours with them, and they were incredibly great, showed me a lot of new things, and I very much appreciate that offer, and there's still more that I'd like to see, but I want to say thank you and especially recognize both Jared and Justin for, for their time today. So please pass on my thanks to them.
Councilmember Southwood? Was it your light that was on? Councilmember Hanson?
My lights are on, but this light is. I had a citizen come to my home last night with a letter, which I will provide both to the council and to our attorney and to Mr. Rigby. His name, I believe, is Preston Knappz, K-N-A-P-B-S, lives on Brown Street or Brown Circle, has had problems with sanitary sewer backing up in his basement. He did make a, a claim, and it was paid. He's also included pictures of the, the outlet going into our system, showing that it wasn't on his property. He was paid on part of the claim. He is now asking for it to be paid for the first claim that caused the most damage. I will provide that letter to you.
We're, we're already familiar with their situation. I'll be happy to provide counsel with a summary of, it has a fairly extensive history, and, and so we'd be happy to provide that counsel, so you can see what, what's gone historically and where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments, Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Not that I'm trying to start a new casual precedent, but I want, Rick's excited. I just wanted to apologize, first of all, I'm a tire, but most of you, I don't know if everyone knows that my plane was supposed to arrive a little earlier with time to go home and change and make the meeting, but unfortunately, this same airline, this is three times out of four that they made me miss something important, so I don't think I'll be flying there anymore. Secondly, just wanted to apologize for the tardiness. I was a little outside of my control today. I wanted to take a second and thank you all. I know last week's meeting that I missed, I had a personal conversation with each one of you before that meeting, and I just wanted publicly everyone to know that even though I wasn't here, I know I had an opinion and I expressed it with each member of the council individually, and I am very excited about the changes we've made, and specifically in the mayoral position. memorial position. It's something that, believe it or not, I campaigned on that issue four years ago. It was a change I wanted to see happen. Took a little bit more time because of budgeting issues and things like that, and anyway, just very excited and pleased with the outcome. So thanks to you all for your support, and also the staff, because they don't want the staff to feel like the position itself was something to undermine what they're trying to do. I just think it's a different type of representation I want the city to be enhanced with, and so I'm excited, and thank you, Mayor, for your extensive interest in seeing that accomplished as well. Appreciate your leadership, Vanessa, thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other comments before we adjourn? Bryce Hadley?
I appreciate the fact that some of the events coming up have been recognized, just so that we don't lose any through the cracks. Julius Brown's been very good about sending out emails to you of the upcoming events, there's actually three this Saturday, there's also the Linda Butter's Memorial Fund Run, and then also to thank you as council members, mayor, and all of our staff who participated with the Memorial Day event and spending that time to put that presentation on and come support that. And we're just gearing up, believe me, Julie and Cam, their eyes are getting big because there's a lot of things coming up in the next few weeks. Again, keep your eye on the calendar, a lot of fun events for the Fourth of July and things, and so we appreciate your support with those.
Thank you. At what time does the fun run? Is it at 8?
Looking at the calendar, it says kids run at 9:30. I don't have the date here, or the, oh, 8:30, 5K and 10K, 8:30 AM, kids run at 9:30.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Saying not to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion made by Councilmember Kilpak, seconded by Councilmember McConaughey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven in favor, we are adjourned.
What would happen if we'd all said no?
Then we keep going.